Call the meeting to order and ask you to stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the July 31st County Commission Meeting. I'd remind you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Bender. And if you need a listening device, Craig can help you and he's at the front table. Move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Removed.
Benega?
I'd like to make a motion to amend...
That's for the minutes.
Yep. To amend the minutes' approval.
Nope, we're gonna do...
This is the agenda.
I gotcha. I'll wait.
You're all right. I had it picked up too. So we didn't even need a motion to approve the agenda first.
So moved.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Now a motion to approve the minutes from July 24th, 2018, for the commission minutes.
Thank you for the second, third, or fourth time. Motion to amend the minutes to approve the section of the July 24th, 2018 commission meeting minutes to change the approved date from July 10th to July 17th.
Is there a motion on the amendment? I have a motion. Is there a second on the amendment?
A second.
Excuse me. I have a motion and a second on the amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Now I need a motion to approve the July 24th commission meeting minutes.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item B is to approve the joint city-county commission meeting minutes from July 24th. Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $1,072,814.40.
Moved to pay the bills. Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four are reports. There are none. Item number five is personnel action. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel action. Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number six is abatements recommended for approval. There are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. There are none. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. Item A is the first reading and authorize the auditor to publish notice of a hearing for rezoning, number 18-07.
Good morning. Scott Anderson, Planning Director. And this morning I'm asking for your permission to have the auditor publish a hearing notice for a hearing on a rezoning request. The hearing is to take place August 28th, 2018 at 5:00 PM. This is a hearing with both you and the city of Sioux Falls. The property is located at 7701 West Maple. They're rezoning approximately 3.21 acres from general or from A1 agriculture to the Emerald Pines Plan Development. This would be a mixed-use development, which would consist of basically an events hall, wedding barn, and a single law office practice to be housed out of that building as well. This has gone before the Planning Commission at last July's meeting on the 23rd, whenever last Monday was, a week on Monday, and it was recommended approval by both the City Planning Commission and the County Planning Commission. So today I'm asking that we set that hearing date for August 28th and that you authorize the auditor to publish hearing notice. I'd be glad to answer any questions. I can show you generally where the property is located and, as I indicated, it's for a future events facility and a law, an office to be housed out of that building as well.
Okay. Questions for Scott? Motion to approve publication?
Make a motion to approve the notice for 8/28/18.
I'll second that.
No. August 28th.
Oh, I'm like, what are you talking about? That's not the right number. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Scott. Number nine is a petition for compromise of lien. There is none. Next is opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone here that would like to speak about something that is not on today's agenda. I'm not seeing anyone move, so we will move on to regular business. Item number 10 is a briefing on the gross maximum price for the jail expansion, the GMP. Carol, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. Before you today is a briefing on the gross maximum price for the jail. You know that we've been working on this jail process for a long time. It started several years ago and recognizing the unsuitability of the CCC, the Community Corrections Center, a former Elks Club that was never designed for a place to secure people for incarceration. Where it started. Also recognizing the need for improved space for bookings and that the current space is very crowded and doesn't meet the need for the number of bookings that it currently does. So today we have several people with us who've been working for almost a year on this particular process. I'm gonna introduce Dick Strasberg from Tegra, who serves as the project manager and the owner's rep on this, who will take and introduce the rest of the people and get us started.
Morning, Dick.
Morning.
Could you identify yourself for the record?
Dick Strasberg with the Tegra Group.
Thank you.
So first I thought we'd just give a, just a brief overview of the construction manager at risk process. We work on this every day, so it becomes everyday language to us and we realize that the county has not used this frequently in the past. So I'll just kinda run through a kinda brief overview on it. Roughly a year ago, we retained Henry Carlson, J.E. Dunn, and a joint venture as the construction manager at risk. That was selected in a competitive, competitive selection process. And once a construction manager at risk is hired, it fixes their fee and it fixes the general conditions, the overhead, and so on. So it fixes that and then the subcontractors are all competitively bid from that point going forward. So in summary, J.E. Dunn is fixed in, they're locked in, and they have now gone out and gotten input from subcontractors. They've done it at several different stages through the design process. First, they went through at the concept level and that was, you know, pretty much square footage, you know, estimates and kinda generalities. Then we went to the schematic design. They went out to a few subs in each category. And then design development as it got more developed. You know, schematic design is when you decide that we're gonna do, you know, precast structure versus post-tension and, you know, the various mechanical systems and so on. So that starts to hone it in. Design development starts to really identify the specifics of what we're doing, you know, the exact size of the cells and the type of mechanical systems and where we get engineering involved. And then it gets to construction documents where you actually have documents that are, that go out to bid. So the stage we're at right now is the final stage of the construction documents. And with that, they've been out to a lot of subs and let them talk through that process, very extensive process of going through and vetting the numbers. So today we're presenting the guaranteed, sometimes called gross maximum price or guaranteed maximum price. And that's, it will be an amendment to their contract, which will be, we'll ask for approval on that next week. So today we're presenting the overall of their final estimate here for the guaranteed maximum price. A few things to note on it that is important. The way the guaranteed maximum price contract is set up, we pay for the actual costs of the, to the subs. So if there's a, if there's savings on it, that goes back to the, back to the county. And if there is overages on it, if it goes over the guaranteed maximum price, that's the contractor's responsibility. So at the end of the day, you end up with an exact accounting of what the bills are actually paid. Now, the contracts are held not by the county, they're held by the contractor. So I wanna make sure we have a full understanding of that before we jump into it because once we lock in with this to the guaranteed maximum price, any change to that, it's a change order, both additive and deductive. And we're adding the process right now. We established this number, but that doesn't mean that we're, we've completed everything that's involved in finalizing the number here. Because we wanna have, we've got several things we wanna look at in terms of can we reduce price, you know, further before we actually sign with the subcontracts? An example on that is the brand of the toilets within the cells. We've got a, one manufacturer that was specified. We've got a voluntary deduct from a subcontractor that we wanna consider. So that's the kinda thing we wanna still get into. So we'll, we're asking to have the guaranteed maximum price approved now, this next week, and then we'll be circling back and have other, you know, tweaks to it as we go forward. So why don't we look at the total number? So if we look at where we started, I, we've got good news today because the good news is we've, numbers came in just slightly better than where we had hoped. We look at it where we're at in schematic design, the bottom line stayed the same, the forty-eight, forty-eight million, three hundred thousand, that remains the same. During schematic design, we had, you can see the numbers, we had soft costs of roughly 4.4, construction estimated at 41,1 FFNE, furniture, fixture, and equipment at 800, and an owner contingency of roughly 2 million. So that's where we started at in October when they did the first complete estimate. Then we went to design development and, you know, refined the design further, start to look at it, you know, with more detail, and we thought the number would be 41,4 for construction. And we pulled a little bit out of FFNE, kinda hoping that we still could restore it. Now, when we come to the final numbers here, the actual, the number, as you can see, it's 40,006,838,35. So that's what the guaranteed maximum price would be on the amendment to the contract. And then we restored the number to 800 in FFNE. And you'll see the variable there on the owner contingency. Now, we've got the owner contingency at 2.2 million. That's really what, going forward, that's what we've gotta manage now. How, it's all, anything we save on the, from construction goes to the contingency that we spend out, well, we'll come out of that. Some of the things a contingency will, you know, may get used for, your soil conditions in downtown Sioux Falls, as we all know, they're, they can be challenging. We've got courts, we've got all the soils reports and everything, so we think we know the soil conditions, but when you actually get out there, experience tells us that that may change. So there's, you know, potential that we'd spend some contingency money there or connecting up to this existing building. It's, once you start opening things up and see how it's actually built, there can be some variation there. And then just other things that are coordination issues and things that happen out on the, out of the job site. So that's kinda the overview on it. Seth will walk through the, a little more detail on the process. And I think that it's, it's fair to say that this has been a smooth-running process. One of the things we had that was a real advantage here is the jail that was designed, really, what, 15, 16 years ago. When we went to two or other jails and compared this, it really was, it was really, you know, leading edge at that time. That's now how most jails are being built. So really, we didn't have to change, you know, the basic cell configuration and so on. It's basically, we're doing the same thing we've got. And it was, they were real forward-thinking when that was built. And now it's, you know, modernizing it with, you know, better technology on security systems and so on. But the base of the design that we had is very consistent, so to expand on it, it made it a pretty streamlined process. So have any questions on the, on the process of how we got to the GMP?
I think we're good.
Okay. So we get Seth, maybe you can come up and talk through some details on the estimate and some more specifics.
Seth Larson with J.E. Dunn. Like Dick said, you know, this process started back almost, almost a year ago and we went through different design iterations and at stages we brought along subcontractors. And our relationship with Henry Carlson, they kinda worked on the community here and we brought in our experts from across the country that aren't located here in Sioux Falls. And I think together we brought you a very good group of subcontractors, they're gonna do a good job for you, and they brought good value. The detention contractors and the security contractors are not local people. We just don't have those experts here in Sioux Falls. And so we brought those in and a few other contractors where we were struggling to get good bids. But overall, it was, it was a very successful process. As you can see, that we came in under budget. I think that's probably about all I need to say unless you have questions. I'll let Dave Derry from Henry Carlson talk about our success rate in bringing local people. But if you guys don't have any other questions for me, I'll hand it over to Dave.
Any questions for Seth? Okay. Thanks, Seth.
Morning. Dave Derry, Henry Carlson Construction. Put together a couple graphics here just to show how satisfied we are with the aggressiveness of our local subcontracting community to go after this project and be a part of it. And so the, the first illustration you see there, we just took the cost of the work itself by percentage of the overall project. And what percent was actually going to local contractors and what percent was gonna go to a non-local contractor. And as you can see in the graphic there, 64% of this project is going to local contractors, which is really good. Seth had mentioned, however, part of this project, we have no local expertise. For example, the detention and security equipment. So I wanted to take those out of the equation because we don't have that local expertise. This next graphic actually indicates of the local expertise that we have, what percentage we're successful in a project. And I think this really tells the story to how well our local subcontractors participated. And based on the local expertise available, our local subcontractors actually captured about 76% of this project. And on a project of this magnitude, that is a really, really good number. And so being a local contractor ourselves, really, really pleased with the results we got from our local subcontracting trade group. Any questions?
Questions on that? Commissioner Karski?
No question, I guess, but I'm excited to see that number. That's, that's a great number and it's, like you said, a testament not only to our local contractors, but to you as a construction manager at risk and that people are wanting to and willing to work with you. So congratulations on that. We had no requirement for local participation as far as the bids go. We don't approve each individual bid. That's up to you to get. So I'm excited and I'm happy to see that number.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Yep. You'll have to come to the microphone. And then, yep, you have to come up, introduce yourself. Sorry.
Mike Wendlin, Mayor of Baltic, and I just have a question. What, what are you defining as local? Is it Sioux Falls? Is it Minnehaw? What's your definition of local subcontractor? How far outreach-ing are you?
Sioux Falls community within 100 miles.
Dave, we're gonna have you come back up the microphone 'cause people are watching. Thanks, Mike, for the question.
I say Sioux Falls plus 100 miles.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. That's a good, good explanation. Okay. Who is speaking next? Anyone? After Dave?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on that subject? Are we done? That was our briefing?
As you see, we have a wonderful group of people that have been working for this past year and have been working to really bring this in on budget, if not under budget. We take that number very seriously because we know there is no extra money for projects that are out there. The one thing I will also mention is that at the same time the commission is working on this, they're also working on things such as pre-trial and diversion and supporting the great programs such as 24/7 that Minnehaw County has a long history with. So we're balancing everything in the county as to how we go through and do that. Next week, you will see the final contract before you. We wanted to prep you 'cause this is a big project for us, significant project, and it'll probably, hopefully, be a long time before a commission sees another project of this size. So gives you a chance to review things a little bit more. If you have some more questions, you'll see the final contract next week.
Thanks, Carol. Any questions for Carol? Item number 11 is consider a resolution from the city of Baltic to support a yard waste and compost site for a solid waste permit application to the Department of Environment and Natural Resources. Mike? Good morning. You get to introduce yourself again.
Morning. Mike Wendlin, Mayor of Baltic. This morning, the city of Baltic is here asking for you, if you would please, to pass the resolution. A number of years ago, the city of Baltic started a compost site and it was for grass clippings and for tree branches that the citizens of Baltic would be able to use. And until recently, our garbage hauler would take our composting for us. They indicated that they are no longer gonna be able to do that for us, and so we are now gonna have to house our composting on-site. With that change comes changes required by the DE and R and such that we now have to have permits to have a compost facility, which will include fencing and signage and a number of different things along with all these permits. So one of the requirements is for you folks to please pass a resolution allowing us to have our composting facility. We're still looking for individuals or companies that may need composting because it's real good stuff for landscapers, whatever the case may be. But in the meantime, we figured that we would go through and get the permits and make sure that everything was cared for in that fashion. But our ultimate goal is to find individuals or companies that could take the composting and utilize it for them. So today, I guess I would, you want me to read the full resolutions? Any of you should ask for questions first, perhaps?
Is there any, is there any questions for Mike first? Is it just gonna be grass clippings and sticks at this point?
Two different portions. It's the composting, the grass clippings, and then a separate section is for branches. The branches, we burn. We burn the branches and care for that, but it's the, the grass clipping compost that is, is the portion, I guess, that's changed.
Commissioner Karski, do you have a question?
I would just say, I support this. I asked the same question. Is it just yard waste? Are people gonna be permitted to do more? And, you know, the resolution basically says it's establish a yard waste compost site within the city limits for the purpose of recycling yard waste. I mean, it's very specific in its nature, so I'd be fully supportive of this.
You wanna read it for us, Mike?
I will.
Thank you.
So Resolution MC-18, in support of establishing a yard waste and compost collection site within the city of Baltic, whereas the state of South Dakota enacted a plan in 1995 to reduce the amount of waste disposed of in landfills by not allowing yard waste, but instead promoting the recycling of yard waste by composting. And whereas the city of Baltic has approved a proposed site and desires a, to establish a yard waste compost site within the city limits for the purpose of recycling yard waste. And whereas the city of Baltic has demonstrated to the planning and zoning department the proposed site is in compliance with, not subject to, or not in conflict with applicable zoning ordinances. And whereas the Department of Environment and Natural Resources may review the request for initial authorization under the general permit for a yard waste compost facility and recommend the issuance of the permit with adequate conditions to properly safeguard the environment. And whereas the Board of Minerals and Environment will review, modify, approve, or deny the permit if the tentative recommendation or conditions of the issuance of the permit are consented by any interested party. Whereas the Commission of Minnehaw County is required by South Dakota law, STCL 34A6103, to approve the yard waste and compost collection site prior to the issuance of a solid waste permit. And whereas the Commission of Minnehaw County may rescind approval before the new permit or first authorization is issued and only a significant change in the size, purpose, or location of the proposed facility has occurred, now therefore be it resolved that the county Commission of Minnehaw County hereby approves the yard waste compost collection site to be operated under the terms and conditions of a general permit for yard waste compost sites under the South Dakota DE and R Waste Management Program.
Thank you, Mike. Is there a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Oh, you know what? We, okay, I have a motion and a second, and we will have a roll call vote on this one. Yes.
Benega?
Yes.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Karski?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number 12 is a brief presentation on the Safe Home, a program for the Minnehaw County Human Services Department. Jeff? Good morning.
Good morning. Jeff Yarborough from Minnehaw County Safe Home. I wanna thank you for having me. Wanted to talk a little bit about some of the data that we've been looking at with Safe Home and sort of what it indicates in terms of our efficacy and some cost-saving stuff. This is actually a PowerPoint that I use and I was updating that, so I'm gonna skip through some of this to kinda cut to the chase. If we could skip to page four. This is an indication of what some of the things we actually do at Safe Home. This is direct service with residents. So when you're looking at these hours, the average number of hours per month spent in direct service to residents is about 252 per month. What that entails is either groups or, you know, like harm reduction or assisting residents to their apartments if they're intoxicated, ensuring resident safety. It's all things we do directly with residents. So that's to kind of indicate what it is that's actually happening with some of these guys and kinda why we get some of the results that we do. If we could go to the next page. The next page, please. This is looking at jail and bookings for Safe Home residents. This, this is looking at a timeframe of a minimum of two years. So this is any resident that has been there two years or more and comparing their average bookings to the average days in jail. One of the ways that we came up with these costs, I can tell you that bookings are more than $55. That was sort of an old number that we came up with. When you look at what it costs to book somebody into the jail, two cops usually, the booking itself, all those things, that cost is probably quite a bit higher than that. I think the commission is pretty aware of what per-day costs of the jail are. It's about $99 per day. So that's kinda where those savings are come up with. The comparison is, you know, basically 400 and, you know, you get 518 days while at Safe Home and 1866 when they're not at Safe Home. That's a pretty considerable difference. And bear in mind, this is the long-term look at this. It's 30, this is 32 people that have been there at least two years. If we can go to the next slide. This actually compares year over year. This is 100, looking at 102 people who were at Safe Home for at least three months, looking at previous same timeframe. So year prior, year prior to Safe Home, year at Safe Home. And again, it's, the jail days at Safe Home are about 626. It's 1,807 prior to Safe Home. So a pretty considerable difference in the amount of time people spend in jail. If we can go to the next slide. This is the same information for kind of that long-term look, 32 people. It actually represents about 125 years of Safe Home residents. So when we look at those, we have detox days at Safe Home is 157, detox days prior to Safe Home is 306. This really does reduce the amount of time people spend in jail or booked in jail or in detox. And it's a fairly large sample at this point, and that was kinda one of the reasons I found it sort of useful was the sample's gotten large enough to actually kind of look at this data. If we can go to the next slide. This is kinda the same thing with detox, looking at detox days pre-Safe Home, detox days while at Safe Home. Not as dramatic. I was actually kinda surprised. I thought there would be more detox, but it actually turns out that there's a lot more jail. People are booked into jail more often when they're picked up, say, on a failure to vacate. A lot of times, they end up transferred from the hospital to jail or detox, more often detox there. So one of the things I think it indicates, our guys don't turn into angels when they're at Safe Home, but it does pretty substantially reduce the amount of time that they're in jail and detox. If we can go to the next slide. This is the difference between unreimbursed hospital claims for the year prior to Safe Home and the first year at Safe Home. This is based on 32 people. All these people had been at Safe Home for at least a couple of years. I just looked at year over year because the data gets pretty confusing if you take it out much from there because of rising hospital costs. out much from there because of rising hospital costs. But what this indicates is that the $780,507 prior, the prior year versus the year at Safe Home. Bear in mind, this cost is not something the county pays. If these folks get a notice of hospitalization, you know, we get a notice of hospitalization from the hospitals, that doesn't necessarily mean the county is stepping up and paying that cost. In fact, I will assure you that they don't because the folks at Safe Home are going to be considered indigent by design, and the county doesn't pay that. Somebody does. It's basically the hospitals eat that cost. So, this may not be something that benefits the county in the sense of reducing costs, but it helps, it makes a big difference to the hospitals. If we can go to the next slide. This is, oh, back one, I think, yep. This is lien repayments by residents of Safe Home while they're at Safe Home, going from 2011 to 2017. One of the things that happens is that if people have income or, you know, receiving social security or something like that, they're required to have a payee while they're at Safe Home. That ensures that if they have past bills, those bills get paid. One of those bills is county liens, and I think it's important for folks to pay those back if they have income or receive, you know, cash from some source. So, since 2011, when we first opened, we've, people have paid back $38,000. That may seem, in the grand scheme of the county budget, not a great deal of money, but I think indicates something in terms of people giving something back and paying back for some of the services they've utilized. If we can go to the next slide. One of the things that we do is, we provide residents with opportunities to do some volunteer work. And at these three places, Habitat for Humanity, Feeding South Dakota, and Sioux Falls Humane We kind of, I found a place that you can actually calculate what the value of that volunteer service is. It's about $11,000. I have a staff person that was really interested in getting people involved in giving back to the community. So, he will take a crew of guys out, and they walk dogs, or unload trucks, or whatever's required in these volunteer activities. We make sure they're sober. And in that sense, I think it demonstrates a willingness to give back to the community, at least, you know, on the part of some of our residents, which I think is pretty valuable, financially appears to be. So, these are just some things that I think indicate kind of the value of what we're doing and why we're doing it, and that it does give back to the community in a, in a real sense, both financially and, you know, in terms of improving people's lives.
Questions for Jeff? This was a great report, Jeff. Another thing that maybe could be pointed out was that a lot of those residents pay their rent. It isn't just a county handout, that if they have a source of income, they pay their rent. And it's been an extremely good program. They actually was voted on before I came on the commission, so about eight years ago. At this time, they voted, and I think the groundbreaking was in like November for that project. And it has turned out to be, I think, better than anticipated when they, when they started working on this.
Yeah, I think there've been some good successes. And some of the things I skipped over were actually some of those, you know, I guess kind of feel-good slides indicating, you know, where people's lives were at before they came to Safe Home and kind of what's happened to them since. And I really appreciate that the commissioners kind of took the plunge on this project, and, you know, I think it's been a good project.
It is a good project. Commissioner, Benega?
Jeff, there's been conversations in the past, just for long-range planning purposes, that the Safe Home's pretty much been full for the last few years.
Yes, it has.
It was partially funded by tax credits, which obviously City and Lloyd Construction and their companies help manufacture and build, if you will. Is there any conversations about, frankly, additional rooms becoming available in the future?
There are, and there's really kind of a few different ways to kind of look at how to do that, you know. You know, if we were to look at just adding on, which is not out of the question, that can change some of the, you know, then you have different staffing patterns, costs go up for, you know, and maybe you get economies of scale or not. But there have been some discussions about it. Very preliminary, I would say, but I think there's some interest in pursuing that, so...
But there is a due diligence process going on to consider that possibility?
Very slowly, but I think, I don't want to jump out in front of the cart too much.
No, I don't want you to either. I also don't want you to forget that we have that opportunity at some point.
Yep.
Commissioner Karski?
Jeff, thanks for the presentation, yep. This is such a worthwhile undertaking that was done, like Commissioner Hiberger said, eight-plus years ago, and, you know, for the people that truly have problems coping in society, and one of the things that you do is the volunteer hours. I know that a requirement in order for one of the residents of the Safe Home to be involved in community services, sobriety, at the time that they go to be involved in these projects, can you talk a little bit about what type of community service projects you guys get involved in? Because, again, a person's sense of self-worth is really, you know, based on the work that they do and how they feel about themselves, so, you know, it takes care of several things.
Well, it was kind of funny, when this first came up, a lot of the residents were like, what, you do, you volunteer and you don't get paid? So, we kind of went through a bit of a process with that on, well, what this is about. And once we kind of got a core group that would go out and walk dogs and pet cats and unload trucks at Feeding South Dakota and hammer nails at Habitat, they really kind of wanted to do it. And one of the things that, they know that they have to be sober to go, we kind of check it out, make sure they are. Once that kind of core group started doing that, it really wasn't a problem. They liked doing it. They felt good about it, and I think you're right, that is, you know, how do you kind of move towards some sort of even somewhat level of sobriety without replacing it with something or having some sense of self-worth? So, we encourage that, and, you know, when the guys are coming back, I always make jokes about no sneaking kittens in from, you know, the Humane Society, and they laugh. But we want to make sure that they understand that giving back to the community is important because they've received from that community, as we all have. So, volunteering is an important part of that, I think, and encouraging that. You know, and, you know, I think the, some of these things aren't necessarily part of the Housing First model, per se, but I think they're things that made sense to us and made sense to do because we had the time and the energy and the staffing to do it. And, you know, I don't think I can emphasize enough that Dick Kelly, who is right there, was very instrumental in kind of getting things rolling with Safe Home, and really appreciate his efforts on our behalf.
The lien payment is also great. It may only look like $38,000, but that's a big deal because those are, those are liens that would have never been paid had it not been for Safe Home and for, and for assistance in getting it done.
And $38,000 isn't a great deal of money, but coming out of these guys' pockets, it's real money.
It's real money, so... Thanks, Jeff. I think that's all we have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 13 is a brief presentation on the Sioux Empire Fair. Good morning, Scott.
Good morning. Scott Wick, Sioux Empire Fair, WHLAF Fairgrounds. First and foremost, on behalf of the board, staff, and everybody, myself, we want to thank the county commission for the continued support. Thank Mark Krenz with him and his staff that have been out. I think the grounds look better than ever. We've had some asphalting in the midway and trimming some trees and just a lot of beautification process going on. And even with the carnival just showing up after their last gig, they were showing up yesterday and Sunday, and they've noticed it and have a lot of very good positive comments, so I'm sure the public will see that as well. We're looking at a fairly good weather forecast. It was supposed to be a little bit cooler, but now they're saying it's warming back up into the 90s. The good thing is the chance of rain is still staying fairly low. So, as we know, we're, we've cut one day off the fair. We don't have the last Sunday, so we're an eight-and-a-half-day fair now. But whether, it all hinges on the weather, on how well we do, if it's too hot, or if it's rainy, or we get thunderstorms, but it's looking very favorable for us right now. We have a very good lineup this year. We actually spent less, less this year on entertainment than we did last year. Some of the, some of the bands that we were able to purchase hadn't been picked up by anybody else. We've got a very good, strong lineup, and we will end on Friday with Fluffy Gabriel Iglesias, the comedian, and that was the one where we had 15,000-plus last year. So, we've taken steps to accommodate those folks. We anticipate the crowd will build earlier, so we don't have any early access or anything like that. We'll just kind of build that as we go, and we've made, made plans to make sure that people stay cool, hydrated if they come out at 8:00 in the morning waiting for an 8:00 concert. We've increased security cameras with our security trailer that's there. We've got cameras in several more locations. We've also implemented a central dispatch out of the trailer, which helps in a couple different ways. When the, when the sheriff's department comes out and the reserves and explorers come out, they already have their own radios. In the past, they've had to have an additional radio and monitor their own plus ours. Now, we're taking our radio away from it, and we've got two people that will be in the trailer monitoring security and EMS. So, they'll get dispatched to there, and then they'll expedite that dispatch out to the, to the, to the group that needs to get it, whether it's security or EMS. So, that will help alleviate all the airway time and make it much more efficient. So, we're pleased about that. Other than that, yeah, we just, we're, the food guys are showing up, the rides are here, and they're getting everything built as we go, and we kick off our sneak peek on Friday, and that's free admission for Friday. And then the rest of the week, we're, it's a paid gate. We are free till 1:00 Monday through Friday, what we call our lunch special, if people want to come out and get some fair food and see something to like, come back out later in the afternoon. I did drop off a packet in the office for everybody for some day passes and parking to come out and check things out, so I would answer any questions if you have any.
Okay. Any questions for Scott? Commissioner Benega?
I just want to make one comment, and I appreciate, because I know you were involved in that conversation, but I want to thank the city of Sioux Falls for, quote, their in-kind partnership with some of the asphalt paving that they've done for us, and we appreciate their support. It's a joint effort, even if we don't get the sales tax, they at least did what they could for the asphalt-related issues.
Yeah, the road, that perimeter road was huge. It helped out really with every event, because so many people upon years upon years of having their event would just naturally go around from the north through Madison and come down on the, the access road to the east of us. But now that that perimeter road is all, it's asphalted, it's striped, there's no parking, there's speed limits, and that, yeah, people, people really notice that stuff. And now in the midway, there won't be the obstacle course with the strollers, and that's all nice and smooth. So, things are looking good. We just need, we just need some favorable weather, and it's looking that way so far.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
For the fair.
All right.
Item number 14 is a considered resolution to declare scrap materials from the highway department as surplus to dispose of, to dispose of by recycling at TJN Enterprises. DJ?
Hi, Commissioners. DJ Booth, Highway Superintendent. Over the years at our gravel pit site, our staff has piled construction debris and different things that we've torn out of road beds and, and buildings and all kinds of places. And we've piled it up at our gravel pit, buried it. And the last two summers, when we've done a lot of grading work for the law enforcement rifle and pistol ranges, we've uncovered a lot of that debris. And so, I had our guys just piling it up into, into different piles, some of which is like construction demolition debris that will go to the city landfill, and then some of it is different kinds of metal. And so, a few weeks ago, we brought, I think, three loads of, three truckloads of the scrap metal materials to TJN, assuming that it would just be a few hundred dollars worth of, of stuff, which is less than the $500 threshold for receiving commission authorization to do so. It ended up being a whopping $813. And so, working with our state's attorney's office and finding the right remedy for, for this, since essentially we, I think we broke the law in doing that. We, we had the state's attorney's office work up a resolution. I think it's, it's prepared to, I guess, document that we, that we followed the procedure incorrectly and, and taking a step forward in that regard. So, if you have any questions about what we did or why we did it, I'd be happy to answer those. Otherwise, I have a resolution that I'll read and ask for your approval on the resolution.
Any questions? I'm happy you were digging in the backyard. It's a goldmine back there. If you would read the resolution.
I hear there's a Volkswagen bug back there somewhere, but we haven't found it yet.
If you want to read the resolution, that'd be great.
All right. That being said, Resolution MC 18 dash, I'm not sure what number it will be, but whereas Manyah County supports the recycling of materials which result in responsible use of taxpayer dollars for recyclable materials or scrap materials that are no longer usable. And whereas South Dakota law provides that any property which will be destroyed does not need to be appraised. And whereas SDCL 34A-6-63.1 allows local government agencies who wish to dispose of recyclable and scrap materials through recycling to establish policies, requirements, and procedures for the purchase, acquisition, sale, or transfer of recyclable materials and scrap materials in conformance with state law. And whereas SDCL 34A-6-63.1 exempts certain recyclable materials and scrap materials from the requirements of SDCL Chapters 518A and 613. And whereas SDCL 34A-6-63.1 further provides authority for a governing body such as local government agency to determine that if it's in the local government's best interest, the governing body may identify buyers other than local government agencies for such recyclable materials and scrap materials, and to negotiate the terms of any such transaction, such as price, delivery, transport, quantity, and term of contract in order to obtain the most advantageous price for the local government within the restrictions set forth therein. And whereas, the highway department sold certain scrap materials to TJN Enterprises on the 12th day of July 2018, and proceeds of which equals $813.80. Now therefore be it resolved, the aforementioned sale of scrap materials to TJN Enterprises is authorized and determined to have been in Manyah County's best interest, and such sale is hereby authorized non-pro-tunk. The proceeds of such disposition equalling $813.80 shall be credited to, at the discretion of the county commission to the general fund or the highway fund.
Thank you, DJ. So, my question would be, before we approve this resolution, we do also have to make a decision as to where the funds go. Can we do that yet today with this resolution, or do we, as another motion, or does it have to be noticed on next week's agenda? Because I knew that going into this, there needs to be something as to where that funds go, and it's not another agenda item, but can we do it since it was noted in the resolution?
I believe that, Madam Chair, since it was in the resolution and the request was made by the highway department in the resolution for the county to exercise its discretion where to deposit it, I think it's fine to go forward with that today.
Okay. So, I would look for a motion to, did you have a comment on it?
Yes.
Okay.
I was just going to mention, if you do that, I'll need two separate motions.
Right. So, we'll do two separate motions. The first one would be to approve the resolution, and then after that, I would need a motion as to where we are going to place that $813. It will either be the highway department or the general fund. So, I'd look for a motion on the resolution.
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
A motion and a second. On this needs to be a roll call vote, so if you would call a roll call.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Yes.
Karski?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously on the resolution, and then I would look for a motion on where to put the $813.80.
I'd make a motion to leave that amount in the highway department.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to put the money in the highway fund. Do we need a roll call on that one? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, DJ.
Thank you.
Oh, item number 15 is authorize the chairman to sign the agreement between Manyah County and the Short Elliott Hendricksons for preliminary engineering designs to replace bridge structure number 50-231-130.
Commissioners, we're requesting permission to enter into an agreement for a type, size, and location preliminary. and location preliminary engineering agreement to study the existing bridge structure and drainage area on this structure. It's just east of Renner, about two miles north of County Highway 130. And the existing bridge was, was built in the 1930s, has, I think, around 67 cars per day that travel over it. I'm thinking that number will go up once the bridge is replaced, and it's, it's a wider bridge. It's in pretty rough condition right now. It is a posted structure. It's on a township road. And, and the, this agreement is for $29,500. Like I said, it will give us the type, size, and location of the new structure that will be proposed, and, and so we'll come back again with a follow-up agreement for the actual design. This bridge is, is budgeted for design in '18 and construction in '19.
Questions for DJ? Commissioner Bender?
DJ, I just, I know you have kind of a priority list of structures that you kind of work off. Was this one that had been on, under scrutiny and on your list for a while as something that was going to need to be looked at, or did something change?
Nothing changed with this structure. This has been in kind of our five-year plan for a number of years. It's not, it was not the highest priority structure when we were looking at, at bridges a few years ago when it, when they were a really big issue. But we're more on a maintenance schedule of replacement now, where we're replacing between two and four structures every single year. We don't necessarily replace the worst structures that we have every year, but this one is probably considered one of the top five or so worst structures, structurally speaking, in our, in our county highway system right now. Of our 197 bridges, there's, there's probably five of them to 10 of them that have a structural sufficiency rating of, of less than 40. And, and that's that 100 to zero scale of, of structural sufficiency. And so I think it said this one was like a 38 or something like that, 36 maybe.
Okay.
So nothing really changed at, two years ago when we most recently inspected this one, but we've been looking at it, knowing that when we've got the money and the time is right with construction phasing and things like that in the area, that we should be replacing it.
Okay, thank you.
Looking for a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 13 is consider a motion to approve the two proposed resolutions for submission to the South Dakota Association of County Commission for Legislative Action.
Craig Dewey, good morning. Good morning, Craig Dewey, Commission Office. Last week, you considered a group of different legislative resolutions, and following that meeting, there were a couple of resolutions that were not approved by the Commission and in discussion with Commissioners, have been brought back this week for consideration to be added to the legislative platform from Minnehaha County. The due date is today for the postmark that legislative resolutions need to be sent to the South Dakota Association of Counties for consideration of adding to their policy list of statements, which will finally be determined at the County Commissioners' Convention in Pierre at the beginning of September. So the two resolutions that are being considered are Emerald Ash Bore mitigation, as well as state funding for human service agency transport. Just stepping back for the process, Sioux Falls, as well as a number of other surrounding municipalities like Crooks and Del Rapids, Garrettson-Hartford-Harrisburg joined Minnehaha County. We all met together. This process started last year, and a group of resolutions were developed, I believe it was around 12, that passed last year. And the idea was that when a resolution benefits one entity, it benefits the entire local area. And as far as Emerald Ash Bore mitigation is concerned, in conversations with Mark Krins, he's indicated that there are over 50 ash trees on the county campus in addition to all of the ash trees that exist at Wall Lake. And if those trees would become infested and need to be removed, that would be a substantial budget impact for the county, which is currently not a part of the budget. And so there's concern that the county would end up short-funded, so to speak, in terms of the budget and scrambling to take care of that. And so when you remove a tree, not only do you have to cut it down, but you've got to rent a stump grinder, bring that in, which adds to the significant expense, so.
Why don't we just talk about that one before you move on to the next one?
Yes. I would be happy to answer any questions regarding that.
Any questions on the Emerald Ash Bore? I would point out to our audience watching on TV or here that we aren't looking to, for money to save trees. We're not looking to treat the trees. This is money that would be used for removal and disposal if we got to that point. In the conversation at the meeting, they talked about the pine beetle that was devastated out in, devastating out in the hills, and that the state government did step up and give some funds to help with that recovery in, of the area. And that is why they decided, or we decided as a group to bring the Emerald Ash Bore, because this is going to be a huge financial impact if it actually starts hitting our campus in our Wall Lake, and we have other parks too that's not just Wall Lake, so.
And Mark Krins is here. If you have any questions, I believe he is looking at purchasing some equipment to do spraying within the facilities department, and so that substantially reduces the cost to the county in an effort, again, to prevent the county from being impacted significantly by expensive tree removal cost.
Okay. Any questions for Mark? For Craig?
Move approval.
A second. A motion and a second, any additional conversation? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Oh, excuse me, we have to have a roll call vote on this one, too.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Yes.
Hiberger?
Yes.
Karski?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Item B.
The second legislative item for your consideration is state funding for human service agency transport. And as far as human agency service transport's concerned, this is not related to the Human Services Center in Yankton. This is related to transport for organizations like Lyscape that individuals receive transport to, and that's provided frequently by Para Transit in Sioux Falls. So full state funding for this transport would help cover the cost, since right now the cost isn't fully covered. If the individuals are unable to get transport to Lyscape or other organizations to receive services, likely outcome would be that those individuals would go to human services within the county, and the county would have some additional financial exposure for cost for services. So really, the state funding for this human service, human service agency transport is a win for all the parties involved in terms of reaching needed services and helping protect the county as well.
Any questions?
Move for approval?
A second.
A motion and a second, need a roll call vote.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Yes.
Hiberger?
Yes.
Karski?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Craig. Run to the post office. Item number 17 is the Minnehaha County Liaison Reports. Are there any reports? Commissioner Bender?
I'll just report that since Stacy Tezen resigned as the head of the Homeless Advisory Board, we've taken this opportunity to kind of sit back and, and relook at what that board has accomplished and what our goals are for the future. We've had several meetings now, met again last week, and we are, we are looking whether there is a need to maybe do some study. We talked to some folks from Augustana to see what their availability is to help us get a broader picture of where we've been and where we are, and maybe how to accomplish the best use of the dollars that we expend towards the Homeless Advisory Board to accomplish the most for the citizens of, of both the city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County. So we're going to wait for a proposal for them, and then we'll be bringing that back so we can talk about it and see whether that's something that makes sense to go forward. So at the moment, we're not advertising to fill Stacy's position until we have a chance to kind of reset where we are and, and make sure that we know where we want to go and fill the, before we try to fill that position.
So those funds are still in the, that was going to be my question, but the funds are still in human services for, and that is a joint position between the city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County?
Correct, yep. And these conversations have representatives from the city and, and the county and, and board member, so.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? Is there any new business? Is there any old business? Look for a motion to recess. The commission meeting for, what do we need, five minutes? So at 10:05, we will reconvene into exec session, so I need a motion to.
That's my motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. We got five minutes.